And with that, I'd like to call to order the City of West Bend Licensing Board for January 9th. Note that we do have a quorum and we have a whopping two items on the agenda, first being approval of the Licensing Board regular meeting minutes from December 5th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, so I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And number two, Mickalina's transfer of Class B license from 1032 Gateway Court to 235 South Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any questions on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, so I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And having no further business for the Licensing Board, adjourned by the call of the Chair.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee for January 9th, 2023, 6:25. We've got four items on the agenda this evening, first of which being the approval of the minutes for the Finance Committee regular meeting, December 19th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second, well, okay, sorry. First item on the agenda for consideration, resolution accepting a donation from Phyllis Schwartz.
Thank you. Good evening. Chief Derry, take it away. Sorry. Go ahead. Thank you very much. Good evening. Great to see all of you. On October 27th, Phyllis Schwartz, that's the wife of former police chief Jim Schwartz, in her women's group, they used to be the Red Hatters, they're now called something that I can't remember, but it's the same great concept. It was fun. Came and paid a visit to the Police Department, got a great tour of the department, and as a way of thanks, donated $25. We'd like that accepted into the crime prevention account, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions for Chief?
Just thank Phyllis, I'd like to thank Phyllis Schwartz for her kind donation. Sure the Chief will find good things to do with it.
Thank you, Alderman Allen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Second item on the agenda for consideration is a resolution to transfer funds from the Project SEEK account for Lackleran Conservancy floating dock.
Thank you.
Mr. Mike.
This evening, our department is requesting to transfer $10,000 of Project Seek funds to an operational account to purchase a replacement floating dock for the Lackleran Conservancy. The Park and Rec Commission and the Friends of Lackleran Board of Directors both unanimously approved the utilization of these funds. Project Seek was an after-school summer educational program that provided different programs emphasizing recreation, environment, technical skill development, literacy, and they also talked about the history of West Bend. The program was funded by donations and grants. In June of 2012, the program is no longer offered, and in October of 2012, the City of West Bend Finance Committee transferred the Project Seek funds to a Lackleran Conservancy Educational Fund to be used for programming at the Conservancy. The current floating dock at the Conservancy is used for a wide variety of activities, including educational opportunities. The floating dock allows students to get out on the water. They get to experience that type of environment. We do water testing from it with some of the older students. We collect insects and amphibians with some of the younger students. The students can get out there, do their bird watching. We do inventories with the wood duck hollies and things like that off of that pier. Our general users use it. Our weddings use it, things like that. Our current dock has many holes in it and has been patched many times and has quite a lean to it. So that's why we were kind of hoping to use these funds to replace that dock and hopefully offer our students and our guests and our general property users a safe experience. Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions for Mike? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item number three, a resolution authorizing the transfer of recreation fund balance to expense account for equipment for Dirty Ninja Mud Run for kids.
Thank you. Again, our department is requesting approval to transfer eight...
$8,290 from the recreation fund balance.
...expense account for the purchase of two inflatable slides to be used for the Dirty Ninja Mud Run and our super slide days that we have in Regner Park. The Park and Rec Commission approved the utilization of these funds at the December meeting. We currently operate one inflatable slide, excuse me, and two ground slides for the mud run. This purchase would allow us to purchase, you know, two additional inflatables. The kids love them. They're a little bit easier on the kids, they're not bouncing on the ground as you're going down the hill, the big water slide down into the pond. So we are looking at these for some improvements for the mud run this year and then some other additional obstacles. So with that, we are requesting that transfer. Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Final item on our list tonight is a resolution for appropriating election funds. Ms. Elizabeth, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening. The Office of the City Clerk has received reimbursed funds for the 2022, sorry, general election audit from the Wisconsin Elections Commission. So our department is requesting that the election revenue funds from the, from account 014614461105, totaling $2.61 with five cents, received on December 28, 2022, be appropriated to the election salaries for $54 and the remaining balance for $207 with five cents to the election supplies account.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any questions for Elizabeth? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. No more business before the committee adjourned by the call of the Chair.
And good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of West Bend Common Council Meeting for January 9th. We do have a quorum. Please join me to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Clerk) Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll note that we have 16 items on our agenda, the first being approval of the minutes, the Common Council regular meeting minutes from December 19th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Model and Allen, any comments or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, so I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Under Presentations, first one is Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week for January 8th through 14th, 2023. If we can have a motion for this recognition?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Burke, Quest, and Allen, all those in favor, so I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this recognition, so reads, "Whereas school crossing guards stand faithfully at their posts along busy intersections in every kind of weather, while dealing with distracted and speeding motorists to complete their charge of safely assisting schoolchildren across the street. And whereas school crossing guards provide children a familiar face every morning, keep an eye on their well-being, and alert the Police Department to dangerous drivers and driving conditions. And whereas school crossing guards help reinforce in the minds of the young people, they assist the importance of traffic hazard identification and safe street crossing behavior. And whereas local declarations, Police Department honors, and especially smiles and kind words from children, help to convey the gratitude of our community for the life-saving and injury-reducing role that school crossing guards play. Now therefore, I, Kristoffy Jenkins, Mayor of the great city of West Bend, do hereby proclaim January 8th through the 14th, 2023, be designated as Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week for the wonderful assistance that they provide to our schoolchildren." And with that, I would like to turn some time over to our Police Chief for some additional kind words. Take it away.
Thank you. Thanks, once again. Take it away. We invited all our crossing guards, but like everyone, they've got busy lives. So this is Cliff and Laura Van Beek, longtime crossing guards, and not just, it's interesting to note, not just that single intersection, both of them routinely take multiple intersections, fill in where needed and are committed certainly. Our crossing guards symbolize one of our most pivotal and monumental priorities for the West Bend Police Department, and that is school safety. We often refer or talk about school safety and immediately jump to the actions we're taking place to make sure our schools are safe inside the building. These folks represent the first step to get there. I am always reminded what a true public servant means when I speak with our crossing guards, and more importantly, when I speak to the families that have been served by our crossing guards. I'm sure every one of you has a story where you heard from constituents talking about their longtime relationship with their crossing guards. They're not just making sure the kids get across the road safe, they're making sure they've got a friendly smile, making sure they understand they live in a community where their Police Department, their city, their community cares about them. A kind word. We all take those things for granted, right? We all do. We all have that in our lives. Not everyone has that. Some of our kids, these folks represent a huge bright spot of their day. So it's not just safety, it's making sure the kids are living a kind and happy life and well-rolled by them. So you two, I thank tremendously for being here, but I also thank the, we have 14 full-time crossing guards and four additional subs, and if you bear with me, I want the people at home to know who's protecting their kids. Mary Abel, Christine Bannenberg, Carrie Bone, Diane Brundle, Mary Corning, Lisa Flitter, Christine Growth, John Growth, Bonnie Kershtier Salinon, Mike Reindl, Kathy Rush, Steve Rush, Patrick Salinon, Ruth Ann Shaw, Robert Stylin, Sally Taylor, Laura Van Beek, and Cliff Van Beek. So for, on behalf of the Police Department, I hope a nice round of applause. (Applause) Now, you may wonder, that name sounds familiar. What's an interesting side note is our Lieutenant Dan Van Beek is our crossing guard supervisor. So there's some very interesting conversations around the Thanksgiving table about school safety. We are always, to the folks at home, we are always looking for help. There's more intersections than we have people, like most things going on today, we need staffing, and this is a great way, if you have a couple hours a day, to dedicate back to the community and to really have that warm feeling, I'm sure we're all feeling right now, to know that you can play a role in keeping our kids safe and loved. So if you're so interested, give us a call at the Police Department, 335-5000, and ask to speak to Lieutenant Dan Van Beek, myself, or any of our supervisors, and we'll get you signed up. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Very nice words.
Thanks so much. Thank you all for your service. And with that, I'll go to our second presentation. Albrecht Free Clinic announces a new dental care partnership with Lake Shore Community Healthcare, and we have Kristen and Ruth here to present to us. So welcome, ladies. Let us know what's going on.
Good evening. I'm Ruth Henkel. I'm the Executive Director of the Albrecht Free Clinic.
Good evening, everybody. Kristen Stern, CEO of Lake Shore Community Healthcare.
So our update is, we actually have been in the community in West Bend and serving Washington County for 26 years. We started our dental program in 2016 and had a, it had a very successful dental program until the pandemic hit, and we really found that we lost a lot of providers. Both had, you know, volunteer providers that had left their practice, but even more importantly, hygienists who, who either left or became very, very expensive to retain. So as we looked at the needs of the community, again, the majority of our patients are from West Bend, however, we do serve the entire county. We continued to operate, but we really found that we really, we needed to partner with other nonprofits that could provide more consistent care to our community. And through a series of conversations, I met Kristen, and one of our dentists actually also works for Kristen, and we had conversations on how we could partner. And really, really happy to say that our Board of Directors really looked at what was the ultimate need of the community, how could we serve that most efficiently and sustain it long-term, and Lake Shore Community Healthcare was a great, a great partner for us. So we started conversations, and I'll let Kristen kind of explain a little bit about their operation, but they are in Sheboygan and Manitowoc, and now this will be their third county. Really, really proud of the work they do and what the future holds for our community by this partnership. So I'll turn it over to Kristen.
Thanks, Ruth. So we, we took over operation at the end of September, and we're excited that we've been able to serve the Washington County and West Bend community, providing primary dental services. So just a little bit about Lake Shore Community Healthcare, we're what's considered a federally qualified community health center. For those of you that don't know about us, we're one of 17 in the state of Wisconsin, and our, our overall role is and goal is to really provide access to healthcare to those folks that are at or below 200% of the federal poverty level, like the Albrecht Free Clinic, really, really looking at what those barriers to care are. Little bit of difference is that we are not a free clinic, so we do accept Medicare, Medicaid, commercial insurance, as well as have a sliding fee scale for those individuals receiving care from us. We've been in business for 10 years. We are a nonprofit organization, like Ruth said, we've been in, in business for 10 years, and in Sheboygan and Manitowoc counties have served over 12,000 individuals on an annual basis. So we're really excited to be here and think we can hopefully move the needle a little bit more than what Albrecht has around oral healthcare and really helping folks get wonderful big smiles here in Washington County. We're open five days a week and are fully staffed from 7:30 to 5 o'clock, and so we'll be here available. And just wanted to let you all know, one of the things I like to do is I know that your constituents often call about needs, oral healthcare, especially those on Medicaid and uninsured, ring your phones because there isn't access, and we just want you to know that we're here, we're serving your community. We have a small little office right now, but are talking about what the future holds for us here in West Bend. So thank you so much for having us. We, we, I'm available if anybody has any questions. You can call this phone number that I gave you on this sheet, and I'm happy to answer any questions at any time. So thanks so much for having us today, and we're really excited to be here and with this partnership.
Thanks so much. Thank you for helping to spread the word. Thank you, Albrecht Free Clinic, for being an important asset here in our community. And with that, we'll move on to consent our agenda consisting of items three through seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Just give that to Model and Allen. All those in favor, so I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to agenda items for consideration, number eight, ordinance amending section 7.075 and repealing and recreating section 7.085 of the municipal code related to downtown parking and parking permit lots regulation. This is brought back from our last meeting where we didn't have a unanimous approval, so it's back here for a second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Just want to note that I did update the effective date because of the approval.
Great. Thank you. And it was motion second. Any further discussion on this? Then, all those in favor, so I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. And number nine, ordinance amending section 7.02 to C of the municipal code regarding maintenance of the traffic manual. Chief?
Ian, and I...
Or Ian.
Yeah, it's very simple, straightforward. The traffic manual ordinance was drafted back in the day when it was paper copy, and we maintained paper copy everywhere. So there was a section in the ordinance that mandated that a paper copy be held at DPW and the Clerk's Office and the Chief of Police. We've now moved to online, making sure everyone has access, that we'll maintain a copy at the Police Department for people that don't have access, but we've already, through Justice Help, already have it posted on our website at the Police Department, and I believe maybe the city's as well, but if not, we certainly will. So just looking to update and make it better access for our community to know what's in the traffic manual.
Great. We can save some trees, too. Sounds good.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I'll give that to Kayla and Butchlick. Any comments on this?
No.
I'm sorry.
No, Kayla and...
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I heard somebody other than Mark, so...
Bee person.
All right. And all those in favor, so I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number 10, ordinance to repeal or recreate chapter 5, Fire Department and Fire Prevention of the City of West Bend Municipal Code. Mark?
Good evening. This is a bit of a housekeeping ordinance, updating chapter 5. It's an actual repeal and replace ordinance. We have a number of corrections that were identified by the Department of Safety and Professional Services during our recent application for full delegation for our commercial billing plan review. And this is, whether we were doing that or not, these are required changes. It references new code references, it removes references to sections that are no longer enforceable, and it makes name changes, it's that sort of thing. It looks like a big change, but it's, the changes are scattered throughout the whole chapter. The only way we could practically do this is a complete repeal and replace. If you have any technical corrections or questions, we do have staff here.
Great. Heard a motion from Kayla, second by Burke, Quest. Any questions? Yes, sir. Alderman Dolnick.
I was just curious, Ian, when was the last time the city went through a recodification process? Because it hasn't been Department of Commerce for a long time.
We updated some of the provisions about other things about a year and a half ago, two years ago, in February, but that wasn't specifically these sections. It was, Kenny's here, I can't remember what specifically we modified then.
So, yeah, there were some things that were missed as far as like the references to the Department of Commerce. It was all just housekeeping stuff when, so retired Battalion Chief Sparts and I went through, we did make some changes, but there were just some housekeeping items that were missed. So there were things that we wanted added and some things that were corrected, knowing that we were probably going to come back and have to make some changes in the future. So this was, again, just some housekeeping stuff that was found to eliminate anything that we are no longer grandfathered in, so like, let's say, the NFPA 101 Life Safety Code, any of the stuff that we might have missed as far as Department of Commerce versus DSPS, and just a few other items that were no longer enforceable because of Act 10 and Act 32.
Yeah, that was part of it, too, was some of the stuff was grandfathered, if we had it in the code as well, so this is cleaning up the rest of that.
Okay.
Any other questions? And I'll call for vote. All those in favor, so I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. And then we have ordinance to amend 14.032 of Chapter 14 Building Code of the City of West Bend Municipal Code as well. Mark?
This is also because of the DSPS audit of our codes, the reference that they, they found, one reference we were missing that we are required to include. It, it refers to SPS 327, that is simply what we're adding the reference to, and for those of you like myself who aren't familiar with SPS 327, it deals only with camping units within a jurisdiction. So if you want the regulations for HVAC in a teepee, a yurt, or a cabin, this is the code where you have, where it's dealt with, but we're required to have it by reference.
Terrific. All right. Second. Thank you. Kayla and Burke, any questions on this?
Yurts get hot.
Yes, sir.
I look forward to the glut of yurts that are going to show up in West Bend now.
I'm excited for that, yeah. Could have a whole compound. All right. Then, all those in favor, so I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Mark. And next up, we have the advisory referendum, Washington County municipalities sharing the sales tax funding our local road projects. I can...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Model. I'll kick off that discussion quick. The Mid-Murray Municipal Association has been discussing options for sharing the sales tax for the past few months. I know a number of our members have been a part of those conversations. The effort is now getting, getting moved forward to different municipalities to put referendums on their ballots. Kiwaskam, I believe, theirs was the first one that made the recommendation to go forward with a referendum. We are up next to discuss that, and I'll let maybe our administrator fill in any more details that he has as well.
Sure, I can share some history of this conversation. It's been discussed for some time. Did find a resolution of this body dating back to 2006, asking the county to share sales tax shortly after it was enacted, and then again in earnest in 2017 and 2019. In 2018, 2018, the City of West Bend did a similar advisory referendum on the four questions of roads, if you recall, that act dated back then. This time, Mike Miller's group, the Mid-Murray Municipal Group, is, as Mayor mentioned, leading a discussion to encourage all municipalities within the county to do it, or as many as that are willing to. So the city is being asked to put this question before our voters as well. So it passed in 2018 by a margin of like 66% back then. If there's any questions, I can attempt to answer them.
And there is a motion second on the floor, so I'll call for vote. All those in favor of the proposed referendum as presented, so I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Well, that was easier than I thought. And, uh, let me get back to where I was. And then we're on number 13, which is a new polling place location for District 5. Do we have one picked out?
Yes, we do. So now that we have the primary spring and the spring election approaching, the Clerk's Office is asking to relocate our five, our District 5 polling place from Good Shepherd, and now hopefully, not hopefully, but we got, we confirmed with the county, we would like to move it to the Public Agency Center.
I'll move to approve it.
Second.
Thank you. Dolnick and Model.
Where is the, the public what?
Washington, Indiana. The big building.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Doesn't that violate the desire to put the polling place into the district? It's outside of the bounds of the district, it's in District 6.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a strict requirement, it's preferable to have it there, but, I mean, if there's no other suitable location...
I take it there were no suitable locations in the district.
Yeah. Yeah, we covered this, actually, Mark, you may not recall. I had, we had a discussion with the city attorney, because I had asked, I pointed out, the statute really doesn't say that specifically, and we've exhausted everything else in the fifth district.
No, I know. It's, the statute doesn't require it, but the desire is where possible to be in the district, and this is outside of the bound of the district.
Unless we pitch a tent somewhere.
A yurt.
Yeah, we do it now. There we go.
A yurt. We now have a reason to have a yurt.
Traditional voting here.
And we can air condition them, we know how to do that.
And Elizabeth can confirm, as we've done every time, you'll send out proper notification to those voters and all that.
Yes, that's correct. Social media and...
Awesome. All right. Any questions on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, so I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we're on to reports. First one being a report by Alderman Allen regarding the downtown bid board meeting held on January 3rd.
On January 3rd, the first meeting of the city meetings calendar, the bid board had its annual organizing meeting. We started with an election of officers where, as a precursor to what we saw in the, in the House of Representatives, we took several votes to elect a president of the bid board. Mike Husar is our returning president. We had a number of rounds of voting for vice president as well. Peggy Fisher is our new vice president. She's with Shooting Star Travels, and then Wesley Feast of the, the antidote is the secretary. So we have our, our officers. We approved the financial report. We approved the financial report. We also approved designating $5,000 in marketing expenditures toward matching funds to secure a joint effort marketing fund, which will market the city of West Bend to the broader area large outside of necessarily the city, like the state and beyond the state. So, again, that's, the joint marketing funds are also being contributed to by the West Bend Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown West Bend Association, and the City of West Bend Communications Department, who will be administering the grant as well. We also discussed an interactive map software application. There were a number of questions, and so we've asked that they provided, demoed our next meeting in February. And finally, Chief Daring reported on the progress of the new parking ordinance that we just passed, and we adjourned.
Sounds great. Any questions for Alderman Allen? And last but not least, a report by Alderman Butchlick regarding the deer management committee. Sure feels like it's been a while since we've talked about deer.
Yes, it has. Yes, it has. And in the meantime, they've just been having a feast out there. We held our meeting on Wednesday, December 21st. The committee received a recap of our deer abatement programs, and a drone survey was presented from the various parks, which was done by the USDA Wildlife Services. The drone was done right after the state deer gun hunt was, so it was actually the second or, second or third week in December, I believe, is when they did the drone. I've handed out some information that we were presented for the council to take a look at. It was kind of interesting that the survey had some awful high numbers. Again, Lachlorenn had a number of over 27 deer located in Lachlorenn, and last year we were below that. So, it seems like they didn't get many out of that, but this year, all of a sudden, they seem to be migrating in that area. And then there was some private property just off of Regner Park where that population was fairly heavy. But we anticipate the light enchantment in the park probably kept the deer out of the Regner Park area because of all the activity going on, so they just relocated in private property next door. The other place was, a large number was Ridge Run Park. There were 27 deer located at Ridge Run Park. So, overall, they had a total of 142 deer again in some of these various areas. The committee, after reviewing the survey, went with the recommendation from USDA Wildlife Services to continue this year again for the abatement program and continue to hold that deer density goal down. We also applied for a grant again. Every year, there is a grant that is, we're able to apply to help fund some of the costs that we incur throughout this program. That's it.
Thanks, John. Any questions? Alderman Model.
I'm sorry, John. I'm gonna, I have to grill you again on this. I'm not really crazy about this program, but what was the, was it a federal agency, you said, that made the recommendation to continue?
Yes. The same people that we've had do the same thing the past year.
Sure, sure. And did they say specifically why they recommend continuing?
Yeah, they, we have, the density of the, a good example, Lachlorenn has 142 acres. The density population of the deer should be approximately 4.4 deer per square mile. At density of 20 deer per square mile, they should have a total of 4.4 deer in that. They had a survey of... Yeah. Where did I just put that?
26 to 27?
They had 27 deer in there. So, and I, I know that they were very pleased last year of the fact that it has not deteriorated some of the vegetation that they've been planting out there. They've noticed a difference, but now if we decide that we're going to back off on that, we're going to be right back to ground zero again, where we need to, we need to continue in some of these heavy areas to kind of push back on them.
Well, I would argue that we are back to ground zero, though. I mean, there's more deer out there now based on the drone survey than there was last year at this time.
Yep, and if I have to come back, if I have to give you an answer why that is this year, I don't have an answer.
It might be worse.
I've maybe, Mike, can you...
Figuring that out, though.
You're out there every day watching them, aren't you?
Yeah, of course.
He's out there feeding them.
I just take my entire office out there. With a property like Lachlorenn, there's a lot of township property around it, so the deer can fluctuate on and off the property, just like, just pretty much any one of these properties, they can. When they do the drone surveys, these drone surveys are actually quite impressive, but they can miss some deer here and there. There's always a little plus or minus. The number of deer or lack of deer sightings over the last 12 months out at Lachlorenn tell us that the program has been beneficial. We see, we see some of those benefits from it. Regner Park, for example, is another prime example. Our staff has reported only seen one doe and two fawns this entire summer, pretty much in Regner Park on a regular basis. I know the Police Department sees a lot, a lot of different things at night, deer herds and things like that moving through, but we notice less deer on some of these properties because of this program. We are also receiving no phone calls from, no phone calls from our neighbors. North of Regner Park, we always had quite a few neighbors that would contact us in reference to damage on their property. Also, along the, I believe it'd be like the west side and kind of north side of Ridge Run, also, we used to take a lot of phone calls from those residents up in those areas. We don't receive those calls anymore. So, we don't have the ability to go out and survey neighborhoods, but we, we always rely on our customers to kind of call us and let us know, you know, what's happening and things like that. We don't hear from them any longer. We don't. The only place I've taken any calls was in the Bicentennial Park area over the last summer, and that's, there's a high deer density in that area, and we're working on it, so. I know there's always some concerns with this program, you know, reducing the deer population and things like that. I get that, but looking at what we are experiencing, it seems as if it's working, so.
And does the grant program currently cover the full cost of implementing this?
No, the grant, the grant would be $5,000 towards this program, and this entire program is J816,000, somewhere right near, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Yeah, that's close. It fluctuates a little bit.
Yeah. Last year, they were able to remove the deer in a very timely manner, so less time out in the woods, things like that, didn't cost as much. So, and again, the costs associated with it also includes the processing of the meat and, which, you know, is then taken back over to the, you know, the food pantry, so.
I love that we're doing that, you know, don't, don't get me wrong, but I think just the mass, the mass extermination of wildlife, if it's not doing any good, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But if you say it is, it is, you know, I'm just looking at the numbers, so. Is there an end game in sight?
Yeah, I agree. I haven't, I used to have calls from Regner Park area, 12th Alder Street in that area, and I have not gotten any phone calls in the past two years now. And I have actually had a call, one where I am finally happy to see that you finally decided to step up on that program, and they haven't noticed a problem. One of our committee members did mention that he was walking through Ridge Run Park, and one of the people were walking by, and they says, "Aren't they doing any deer abatement programs around here?" He says, "I thought Ridge Run was one of them," and that was in the winter time. And he says, "Yes, they actually are doing it out there right now during this time." The guy says, "Well, I don't see anything. I don't see any bud trails or anything," he said. They clean everything up that the public doesn't even know they're, they're there. They're in, they're out, and everything that they take care of is all gone. And that is one thing that is very benefit. These people are very, very positive in what they do, and they, they do a great job out there. So, that was a great comment to hear versus seeing unnecessary things that really wouldn't be very popular to see. So, I thought that was a good comment. Anything else? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
That is the end of our meeting, so open up if there's any other announcements for the good of the order. Alderman Burquist.
I'd just like to acknowledge the fact that today was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and I'd like to express my thanks to the police officers on our department for the service that they do for our community. Thank you.
Amen. Anything else? Then, having no further visits for the common council, adjourned by the call of the chair. Have a great night.